Yep.
We will call this meeting of the 437 Board of Education to order. We are going to start tonight with staff and school highlights, so Chelsea, if you want to come on up.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I have three team members from Indian Hills that I am going to share with you tonight. We'll start with our student nominees. I'm gonna have Ion come up here. This is Ion Gadom. And he is a student that is in fourth grade at Indian Hills, so I'm gonna read some words about him. So Ion was proudly nominated by two staff members at Indian Hills. His fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Crawford, is in the audience here. And then also our school counselor, Mrs. Mick, both nominated him. And it's easy to see why. He is an outstanding student who consistently demonstrates responsibility, respect, and an incredible work ethic. Last week, we had the honor of hosting Dr. Randy Watson at our school, Commissioner of Education. And Ion, along with several other students at Indian Hills, got to present to him the benefits of AI in the school place. So no matter the challenge, Ion always approaches every task with focus and determination, always giving his best. He's a natural role model, always polite, dependable, and always ready to help others. His positive attitude and love for learning make him stand out in the classroom and beyond. Our school counselor shared that Ion is not only a strong student, but also a problem solver, a creative thinker, and someone who truly thinks outside of the box. He's patient, understanding, and brings a calm, thoughtful presence to every situation. Ion, we are so proud of you. Your kindness, dedication, and leadership makes Indian Hills a better place. Congratulations on being our shining star this year.
All right.
Ion, Ion, how can we get you to crack a smile, buddy?
Edit, do you want to be in the picture or do you want to take the picture?
I'd like to take a nap.
Okay.
Yeah, of course. Yep. All right, one, two, three. I'll do this one. Perfect.
Congratulations.
All right, next up, we will honor a classified staff member. So this is Amanda Byard. She will come on down. So Amanda Byard's been with us for a few years now at Indian Hills. She serves as a speech and language pathologist para educator. So she is kind of the right hand of two of our SLPs that are, that work at Indian Hills. She's an incredible speech and language para educator. Amanda supports our two speech SLPs with dedication and care that truly goes above and beyond. Every day, Amanda works tirelessly preparing materials for her students, volunteering her own time for kindergarten roundup and other community-wide events, and often takes home work to ensure that everything is ready and perfect. She is a perfectionist, for sure. And she does all of that in her spare time outside of her normal work hours, just as volunteer. Her commitment doesn't stop there. As all of you guys know, getting this school year up and running after our bond construction, we, you know, we're doing everything at the very last minute. And she offered to come up to our school on nights and weekends to get our staff workroom in proper order and just making sure that it was a very welcoming and efficient environment for all of our staff to work in. I think what truly stands out most about you is just how warm and positive you are. Every time you walk by her at any time, she has this huge smile across her face and just very welcoming to everybody that she meets at Indian Hills. Her kindness and dedication makes Indian Hills a brighter and more supportive place. Thank you for all you do. Your hard work, your generosity, and cheerful spirit make you an invaluable part of our school family. We're so grateful for you and proud to recognize you too.
All right.
Another key word, that's a hero.
Do you want to, yeah.
Yeah. It used to be worse straight on.
Here we go. Yes, perfect, okay. All right, and this one. Very good.
All right, and last but not least, we have our second grade teacher, Mrs. Vaughn. So Nicole Vaughn will come forward. So Nicole is as good as they get. So she is a very dedicated second grade teacher at Indian Hills, and she exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding educator. Every single day, Nicole goes above and beyond to meet the individual needs of every student in her classroom. She doesn't just teach, she connects, she inspires, and she cares deeply. What makes Nicole truly exceptional is her unwavering commitment to doing whatever it takes every day to give her students the very best education possible. She brings her whole heart into the classroom, showing up every day with energy, compassion, and a determination to make a difference. Her students know they're seen, heard, and valued, and her colleagues know they can count on her for support, encouragement, and leadership. And they are all in the room. Nicole, thank you for all that you do. Your passion, dedication, and tireless effort make you a shining example of excellence in education. You are so deserving of the All-Star Award. Congratulations.
I was gonna say, do you want to send?
Yeah, come on up here. More than welcome.
Yes. Thank you for being here.
All right, I'm just gonna stay. Try to get out of the picture.
Oh, you're welcome.
All they gotta do is shift.
Very good. Congratulations.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone signed up?
Nobody this evening, no.
As we move into the next part of our agenda, if you were just here for recognition and you want to get up and go, please feel free to. If you want to stay, that's wonderful as well. So roll call, all members except for Brian Smith are present. And then 3.02, approval of the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. We will move on to section four, disposition of business by consent.
I move the Board of Education approved business by consent, including bills in the amount of $425,286.56.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. Moving on down to section five, doesn't look like any administrative reports. We'll move on to section six, item for discussion, 6.01, special board meeting on November 10th, 2025.
Yeah, we had a previous conversation about the Board of Education hosting interviews for superintendent search firms. And so that kind of business sometimes has been taken care of on a special board meeting night. If as a Board of Education you choose to do that, that would be the only topic for that particular evening. And that is something that would be a private conversation or communication with search firms that you're interested in.
Any other questions or comments on that? If not, we'll move on to 6.02, which is K-12 Mastery 10 Standards for English Language Arts.
As they're getting set up, we're very proud of a lot of hard work of a lot of people over the last year in engaging in Mastery 10 work. Morgan and Jenny will share some more details with you about what that looks like. But we got a significant amount of teacher participation and voice in this process as we value that in our district, and it's highly collaborative. So we're excited about the results of this, and it's like you're ready to roll.
Yes, we are here tonight to share the first read of our K-12 English Language Arts Mastery 10 standards. And so to kick us off, we just wanted to reiterate what Mastery 10 is. We know Dr. DeSoto shared some information with you already. But when we say Mastery 10 here is exactly what we mean. So for us, Mastery 10 standards are going to identify the knowledge and skills that all students must acquire as a result of a class, a course, or a grade level. And just to reiterate, these are based on Kansas State standards, and they're also implemented and supported by board-approved instructional materials. So now that we know what they are, why Mastery 10? So our end goals, we had two things in mind. First, we wanted a guaranteed and viable curriculum that provides promise to all students, parents, colleagues, and community members for what our students will know and be able to do as a result of their education at Auburn Washburn. And our second goal was to provide clarity and support for all of our teachers in our ECED-12 curriculum. So we had standards, we still have standards, but what are we going to hang our hat on that all students will be able to know so that we're very crystal clear about the expectations from grade level to grade level? And how can we provide support for those, both to our teachers as well as our students?
As Dr. DeSoto mentioned, we're proud of the collaborative process that existed for Mastery 10 as we built that out. There were 500 contributing staff members, and 255 were involved in an even deeper layer and level with that work. So in the fall of 2024, the beginning of that Mastery 10 process, identifying those standards, included all staff members. The groups in K-12, K-5, and 612 identified Mastery 10 for the content areas and then began working on that additional documentation. Our DCCs continued to meet throughout the spring and summer of 2025 to refine and complete that documentation. And then again, we brought that back to all staff who were able to engage further with the Mastery 10 documentation in August of this year. There are feedback and continuous improvement loops in place so that staff can continue to provide feedback, and we can build those out. They're really intended to be living documents, so they remain current and accurate and relevant. And so our DCCs will review that feedback and review student data to continue this in a very ongoing process. Through alignment and clarity, we were able to really hone into these key benefits for having Mastery 10 in place. It provides equal opportunity for all of our learners, access to the same learning regarding, regardless of their school or classroom. There's consistency in learning, there's vertical and horizontal alignment across our system. Improvement in student achievement. Efficient and effective use of instructional time and increased teacher flexibility. Really honing into streamlining that process so that teachers have the what, and they get to spend their time and energy on the fun part, the how, the how of teaching, the magic that comes with that. Included for your review today are the K-12 Mastery Standards for ELA and the rationale that accompanies those, the K-5 vertical alignment as well as the 612 vertical alignment. And Jenny will walk us through the overview of those documents.
So you have seen a preview of this, but we have provided for every single grade level the Mastery 10 overview. And so if we look a little bit more specifically, at the top, you'll find the grade level, and then this is English Language Arts, and then the revision date. So some of the dates may look a little bit different, but that's because they were either refined or kind of finalized, if you will, for the time being on those specific dates. And then down below, you will see the standard number, as well as the standard wording, as well as the selection rationale over there on the right-hand side. So while this doesn't show 10, a lot of the documents will be two pages in length, and then you will see all grades K through 12. The next document that we have provided for you is the K-5 vertical alignment. So I realize you cannot see it on my screen, but you have access to the full document. And so just to walk you through what this entails, on the left-hand side, you will see the grade level, and across the top, you will see the categories of the English Language Arts standards. And then you'll see the standards for each grade level listed there below. So you can see what that looks like at each grade level, but how that aligns and walks through the grade levels. And we have done the same thing for 6 through 12. So again, you'll see those grade levels on the left, the categories on the top, and then each individual standard listed for each grade level.
We will continue to bring up our other areas for discussion as items for discussion, and that includes K-12 core areas, math, science, and social studies, and also K-12 specials. We have PE, music, art, and library. What questions do you have for us?
A couple of things I'd like to add at the end, if you wouldn't mind me chiming in. So one question that you may be having is, if we're focusing on Mastery 10, does that mean that we are only teaching 10 standards per course, per grade level? And the answer to that is absolutely not. What this does is it allows us to prioritize our work on the 10 most significant, the media standards that are at each of the grade levels. Teachers are still expected to use the remainder of the standards to teach those Mastery 10. But this provides a little more guidance and direction about how things articulate and work together so that teachers can select the supporting standards within their PLCs to be able to move this forward. The other part of this that you don't see, which frankly, I think is even more significant than what you're approving tonight, are the 750-ish instructional bundles that actually go along with this work. So for every single one of these groups of standards per grade level, there are instructional units that have been designed that actually take the Mastery 10 and align it with the instructional resources that you have approved, include things like vocabulary that's expected to be common across classes, and then also provide a place to add in the assessment pieces, which we are working on this year. And so we started with Mastery 10 in order to get a clear, consistent, cohesive curriculum across the district. And now we continue to build and iterate on that in our PLC processes. So what you're seeing is a very important tip of the iceberg, but it is the tip of the iceberg in terms of what we are implementing with our teachers. And that is work that those teachers are doing in their PLCs, and we're very proud of that work. Just wanted to acknowledge that.
Any other questions, comments?
I know there was a lot of discussion on the ELA, the new program. Does it align pretty well with that new, the new curriculum that we?
It does, yes. With the curriculum being tightly aligned to standards and the Mastery 10 being the standards, it lines right up. And as Dr. DeSoto mentioned, those instructional bundles are another resource that ties where those align. They fit together.
Anything else? All right, thank you, guys. So then we will move on to section seven, which is action items. We'll start with 7.01, which is.
Yeah, I shared that document at the last meeting. We have an opportunity to visit with the Shawnee County elected officials on December 8th, and that's a document that we can reference to with that.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, would entertain a motion?
Board of Education approved the United Voice document as presented on October 20, 2025, Board of Education meeting.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. 7.02, special board meeting on November 10th, 2025. Any more discussion on that or would entertain a motion?
I move the Board of Education approved the special board meeting to be held on November 10th, 2025.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. 7.03 is job description for student transport driver, final read. That was presented last time. Any questions or concerns with that? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education approved the job description for student transport driver as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. And then 7.04, HB2382, video requirement, final read. Any additional information or questions, comments?
All that's what we need to.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move the Board of Education approved the Wichita Public Schools Human Development Video as a district's official resource to meet HB2382 requirements.
Second.
There's been a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. That takes us through section seven, and we're to section eight, communications. So 8.01 is Auburn Washburn Foundation American Education Week update. Jessica.
Yes, so two very quick updates. If you're on social media, hopefully you saw last week that Wednesday was Classroom Grant Distribution Day. So members of the foundation board made their way to all of our school buildings delivering surprise checks to our teachers that received grants. There were 58 total grants distributed, just over $50,000. So something that we are very, very proud of and look to continue building on in the years that come. Brad, I know you were a part of that process. Anything to add?
It's always one of the best days of the year, just to see variety of grants that we present and, you know, how it impacts those classrooms and just hear a lot of great feedback at the, especially at the buildings that I know the teachers at as well, so.
Yeah, it's always a day filled with lots of smiles and then some tears, too, so lots of excitement. And then the second update is American Education Week. So this is a week, a national observation set aside to celebrate public education and all those who make it possible. This year, that will be November 17th through 21st. As is our tradition, we typically provide all staff members with some sort of treat. This year, we have partnered with a new business in our district, American Palachi, if I'm saying that right. And they will be delivering or providing, and will be hand-delivering sweet treats to each of our staff members throughout the week. And they will be delivering or providing and will be hand-delivering sweet treats to each of our staff members throughout the week. So I will get you the schedule, I'm working on finalizing that now. We can't hit all the buildings in one day, so we spread it out over the course of five days. And you all are welcome to participate in that or not, depending on your schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? It was fun to see all the grants come across Facebook the day after, and it's always fun to click through those pictures and see everything.
Jessica, would it be possible to get a list of the Thanksgiving meals at each of the schools and the event we want to attend?
Oh, sure.
Be nice, just, I can look them all up, but it'd be nice if you don't mind sending them out, just so I.
Absolutely, yep, I will do it.
Thank you.
All right, we will, at this time, the chair would move that we go into executive session at seven, or sorry, 6:53 PM to discuss students pursuant to the exception relating to the actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma, personnel matters pursuant to the exception of non-elected personnel under coma, discuss budget pursuant to the exception of employer or employee negotiations under coma. For 30 minutes, the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 7:23 PM.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero, we are in executive session.
Okay.
We are back in public session after being in executive session. Is entertaining motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Actioned.
It's been a motion and second, all in favor. Motion passes five zero, we are adjourned.